...of March 21st, 2016 to order. If you would, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and the people in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I pledge allegiance to the right of Michigan and to the state in which it stands, due to its open and fair, united by a righteous seal, where it is all our community and justice for all, without any doubt.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please? Here. 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 Go ahead with the oath of office this evening.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, the Charter and ordinances of the city Cadillac, and will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of City Council Member representing the Fourth Ward according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Welcome down. Carrie, could we have another roll call, please? Councilmember Spelman? Here. Will file?
Here.
Meinhart?
Here.
Sippers? Here. Mayor Philkins? Here. Thank you. And at this time, we need an approval of the agenda, but I do understand we have a couple of updates?
Yes, Mayor, and members of the City Council, there are a couple of side updates to the city's agenda. One would be to add City Council Member Appointment to the Board of Review under Item Eight, Appointments After Public Hearings, and to remove Item 14, Full Session From The Agenda.
Okay, can someone make that motion? I will make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second that.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Sippers? Yes. Spelman? Yes. Mayor Philkins? Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we will open the floor for public comment. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, and if you choose to come forward, we'd like you to state your name, and then also, if you would, write your name and your address for the city clerk. That's very helpful. And if you would please remember that when you come forward for public comment, it's an opportunity for us to hear from you, so please don't expect any dialogue back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Philkins and City Council. My name's Bill Barnett. My address is 915 Stimson. I'm here tonight to discuss the city's poor handling of the public television contract. Apparently, in October of last year, or earlier, the city was taking steps to terminate Jeff Smith's contract and did so with no notice to Mr. Smith, the volunteers of the station, or to the part-time employees. No notice, no input from the public, or from the workers at CCTV, or from them, and suddenly Mr. Petcher makes a phone call to Mr. Smith on a Wednesday before the vote and informs Mr. Smith that the City Council will be terminating his contract on the upcoming Monday. After hearing of this, the Seider family looked at the agenda of the special meeting, didn't see anything on there relative to a public television contract. A public television contract for $25,000 that was not bid out publicly, not discussed publicly, not shared with the public, and was not noticed up properly for the city's special meeting on an unrelated industrial park real estate matter. It is disgraceful and unconscionable to have not told the employees and the volunteers what you were up to, and then to slide it in without proper notice at a special meeting is even more inhumane. Thankfully, the Seiders were on to you. Check your notice in the Cadillac News. It's illegal, it's under Section 3.2. You're missing any comments about adding things on. It doesn't appear in that notice. You had an illegal vote and an illegal meeting. I agree with Councilmember Sippers' statements that the city's actions were inhumane. However, I was surprised over a yes vote. I would ask her tonight to consider making a motion during the good of the order to set aside the council's actions from that special meeting and simply start the discussion over. Councilmember Wolfisle and Mayor Philkins, you could also make that motion, possibly Mr. Meinhart, although it's not fair for him tonight to do that. This contract was not bid out. Where was the vote to waive competitive bidding? That should have been unanimous. People in this community should have had an opportunity to bid this. Twenty-five thousand over ten years, a quarter million dollar contract, no notice, no discussion, all kept in secret, no bid whatsoever. Can you please tell me, when the discussions and the decisions were made by this board that gave Mr. Petcher the authority to terminate Jeff Smith on the Wednesday prior to the vote on February 29th, how did Mr. Petcher know how this vote would go? Why did he wait a few days before the surprise vote was taken? This is not the first time the city's done this. There was plenty of time to put that contract on your notice. It didn't happen? Could have been placed there a week before, or six months before. No discussion happened. What happened to the Cadillac High School students having access to the station at their high school? No public discussion on that. Now, we're subsidizing schools from other counties and other cities. Don't you think it would have been appropriate to have Mr. Smith involved in these discussions? Mr. Seider volunteered on-call for many hours and days for ten years. It was his heartfelt responsibility because he had the knowledge and pleasure of working it and watching it work properly. Thank you to Eric. This was a public television station?
Correct.
Can I finish? I have a...
That would be great.
I would love to. This was a public station. The salaried employee relied on the paycheck. All of Eric's dedicated hours for ten years was of no value. Mr. Smith says, "Well, you didn't even know the future of it." I would like to thank Councilmember Spelman for making the right decision and adding her comments. There was no transparency, and you folks are out of line with your notice in the newspaper. Your vote needs to be set aside. A public discussion to follow. Please do the right thing, start from scratch. Thank you.
Beau McCurdy, 417 Crestview, and I just want you to know that we have ordered signs for the Lincoln Area Watch. We're excited. We've gone out, collected cans. We're doing it, and it's just in time for spring. We'll put those signs in, and the neighborhood's excited. Officer Jeff Rourke is giving a, I don't know, I call it a dog and pony show. He's going to be talking about the Neighborhood Watch, and it is a beautiful thing. He does an incredible job, and the next one will be on the 29th, I believe, at Franklin, at 6 o'clock at the school, and I highly recommend that, or come into one of our meetings at Lincoln School at 7:00 on the second Tuesday of every month. Thank you.
Eric Seider, volunteer at CCTV, 23909 11th Avenue, here in... I'm here to, again, ask, TI, Mr. Wolfle, Mayor, if you'd be set aside and try and rebuild, redo this whole program, how can we take a public entity and make it private? That's what you're basically doing. I've started studying and looking into what's happening. Who's going to police that the public still does have access and is able to put stuff online and up on the air? Who is going to make sure when that money is getting where it's going? Are we going to be looking at this project coming up soon? Well, I just got informed today that Jeff just got his termination notice. So, everything's going forward, I see, no matter what, hello, high water, I see. I'm sorry to say. But, you know, you're forgetting about how Marlon Raines built this studio for the students in the school, how everybody else worked, Amy McDonald, everybody volunteered, gave money, built this studio for the public, how we used everything for the public. Now, you're saying it's going to go to the ISD, so it's going to go to Marion, Lake City, Manten, everybody else in the ISD at CTC. Who's going to pay for this Cadillac? That's it. I have, many years now, tried to get townships, cities that do hit the endpoints on that television channel to help pay. You're not going to see any more money, so you're going to give the $25,000 to the ISD. The ISD is going to give it to whoever they volunteer, which is Eric Potella. Is this sort of a, a little bit of a scratchback thing? You know, we've seen this in the back before, but years ago, when I worked with Potella, he had made points that he is going to run this station. You know, he wanted to run the station. Well, guess what? He's now getting his opportunity, and you're giving it to him. I'm still looking at public. This is not going to be a public station anymore. It's going to be a private station. You may think the public's going to be involved, but they're not. I hope you guys think about it again, readdress it, bring it back, and let somebody in the public sector from Cadillac run it, take care of it. And, you know, if you think it's going so bad, let us sit down, revamp, rebuild, do what we need to do to make it what you expect. Nothing has ever stopped a student or a teacher coming in and saying, "Hey, let's run something. Let's do something." Okay? Well, I guess that's my time. Hopefully, you guys rethink this again, and remember, it's still the kids is who I'm thinking about, and you're just making it a public to a private. That's all.
You know me from last visit. This is my husband, Eric. One sad note, like he said, it's for the kids. He spent hours on the phone with Marlon Raines. It would really be neat if any of you called him up and talked about the early days of the station. He had two TV classes that taught kids how to run a TV station. He said he's had seven of his students go onto the big time. After he retired, the faculty at CAPS were unable to teach it, and it got dropped, and things went downhill. It's a sad state of affairs, but that's not my husband's control. That was tapped that the teachers couldn't do the class and dropped it. One of those teachers is the same one who will now be administering it at the ISD. In addition, it was interesting poring over the Cadillac website, because we've been doing a lot of that. Hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in franchise fees the city gets, and they've been strapped for anything for years. Jeff told Eric and I, he's put in budgets, they're refused. Anyways, back to the bigger hand. It's really neat that Girl Scouts are here, because I was a Girl Scout, and you know what? I fight for what's right. Anybody who's interested in what's right, read up on the Open Meetings Act. Open Meetings Act, Public Act, 1976, says, "All deliberations of a public body shall be done in a public forum." All decisions... I don't think that occurred here. That's just my personal opinion. People were dismissed, decisions were voted on after the fact. In addition, the newspaper, ten days earlier, ran...
The public notice?
...stating the meeting on the 29th was for a lot of land. No mention in there of "we can revise the meeting," which is a sneaky, underhanded thing. Yes, I agree, it's in your city charter, but here's what the city charter says. "Notice of such meeting shall be published in a newspaper of general circulation in accordance with state statutes and shall state the primary purpose of the meeting." If that was your primary purpose, good, but it wasn't. You've known this for months. We've seen emails from last fall with this in the works, with this in the plans. To me, it speaks to political payback when there's no competitive bidding, there are other video entities in this town that would have liked an opportunity. PEG stands for Public Education Government, and, yes, City of Lansing, I've talked with Deb Guthrie, who runs some of the consortiums. City of Lansing did go to private ownership, but it was over a year of public meetings, public forums, public discourse on the matter, public involvement. I have not seen that happen here. The employees did not even know what was happening. We talked to a council member a week before the vote, she said, "Hey, we keep hearing this." "No, everything's good. There's money in the budget. Everything's good. Don't worry about a thing." That's how... It's messed up. So, Girl Scouts, yeah, things don't always go as planned, but try to stand up for the right thing. Don't always trust in public officials, but when they're not, call them out on what's happening, and that's what we're trying to do. This is a public TV station.
We need to wrap it up, please.
Okay. Simply, where is the transparency? There is none. People were dismissed before the vote, and where is the public process? There was none. Thank you.
Seeing no one else, we'll go ahead and close public comments, which moves us to the consent agenda. In this evening, we have the minutes from the special meeting that was held in open session on February 15th, minutes from the special meeting that was held in closed session on February 15th, minutes from the regular meeting held on February 15th, and minutes from the closed session that were held on February 15th, along with the meeting minutes Okay, would anyone like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please? Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Sippers? Yes. Spelman? Yes. Will file?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins? Yes. Motion carries. So, that takes us to a couple of community spotlights this evening.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we have three community spotlights. The first one is the Mayor's Youth Council. Councilmember Sippers, do you want to introduce?
Yes, I'm going to just ask them to come up. I am the advisor for the Mayor's Youth Council, and they've been doing some really cool things that we wanted to let the public know and introduce them. I'm going to let our youth mayor introduce herself and the other members, and then they're each going to speak for a couple of minutes about an event they participated in. I believe there are photos that can go along with this, so we'll just... They'll just be looping, showing some of the things that the kids have been up to.
All right, so I am Cecilia Hubravich, and I am the mayor of the Mayor's Youth Council.
I'm Caitlin Dietlin. I'm the mayor pro temp of the Youth Council.
I'm Jenny Donnelly. I'm a representative at large.
And so today, we're going to just talk to you a little bit about our group, what our group has done, what plans our group has for the future, and about being a new member, and just about the experience of being a member in our group. So, I'll start off by telling you a little bit about what we've already done. We have our big projects that we've done that we're really proud of, this project, Sticker Shop. So, we got money to pay for stickers, and we designed these stickers so that they would warn people buying alcohol for underage individuals. So, if you see this big sticker that says, you know, "You're going to jail if you buy alcohol for underage individuals," it kind of makes parents like, whoa, you know? So, we went around, we went to eleven different locations, and we just blanketed it with stickers, and it was really cool. A lot of people were really into it, and people were taking pictures, and so it was really fun. And we just, we think it was a great way to just spread awareness that you shouldn't buy alcohol for minors. So, as far as what we're working on right now, we're working on contributing to new park benches that are going in, actually. That's something that we're working on. And we're looking at contributing to the heritage, redoing of the Heritage Park and Heritage Plaza. We're looking into that right now. And we also do volunteering and stuff like that, and recently, we went to Lansing with the Cadillac J.C.s. So, with that, on that note, I'm going to turn you over to Caitlin, who's going to tell you a little bit about Lansing.
We just went to Lansing recently on a Saturday, and we went through a model legislature, which is a one-day, like, government program, which is pretty much like people from the Michigan J.C.s and other organizations like us, who went to the House of Representatives and like, pretty much just like, did the procedure of what they do normally. And we heard from two different speakers, the House, somebody from the House and somebody from the Senate, and we actually passed, or like, we passed real bills that were, are currently pending in the Michigan Legislature, and we debated about them, and we were in the majority party, so we got to choose which ones we talked about. Um, I guess that's really it, but...
Yeah, we also saw a senator and a House representative speak, and that was really cool. We saw Senator Kernetz and Representative Weber, so we got to hear a little bit about what it's like campaigning and about what it's like to be in the Michigan House and the Michigan Senate. So, I think Jenny was going to talk about what it's like being a member of our council and also the Cadillac J.C.s.
As a new member, this is like a really great opportunity.
Jenny, can you get right up to the microphone for us? Thank you.
As a new member, this is a really great opportunity. It was really neat to experience this and kind of learn more about how government works. I especially enjoyed the model legislature, which was like a really neat opportunity, which we'd like to thank the J.C.s for sponsoring that. It was a really enlightening and enriching experience and a good opportunity.
So, if you know anyone that's interested in joining our council, we would love new members. We're still in the process of recruiting new members, so just tell your friends about us, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ladies.
Very good. I will tell you that I am incredibly proud of the Mayor's Youth Council and Council Members Sippers, and Cindy Tomasevsky from the Cadillac J.C.s, and the opportunity that you are providing for these young people. There are a couple that aren't here this evening, but we are recruiting, as the girls say, and we would love to have more students get involved, so... And the local J.C.s has been incredibly supportive with Cindy being our, the Youth Council Clerk and helping learn how to, how to do projects, how to take it from the beginning to find the funding, to find the projects, and then grant writing, all this stuff that's really necessary to be a real active community member, and that's what we're growing with the Youth Council. I'm really proud of you. So, we do, thank you. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next community spotlight is with respect to an Adopt a Garden project of Cleveland Anderson is here, as well as Al Dumein. You guys handle the fourth.
Okay. This is something that just came to my mind last summer. As you go along the pathway, which I do almost every day, there were gardens that Al has and his crew had put together that they just can't be maintained, weeded, and annuals added, because there's just not enough people for that and time. So, I thought, I took one little garden at the base of one of the, of the bridge and worked with Al last summer, with Al's permission, and while I was there, so many people would stop me. I would just go once a week and pull the grass and clean it up a little, and Al had given me chips, so it looked pretty good, one side of it. And then I thought, well, why can't we do this as a community project? So, with Al again, and Mary Kidder, who's in the garden club, we walked the garden in October and picked out sites, and Al helped us, so there's ten there. And this is just a baby project now. If it works and people actually come and adopt these and maintain them for the summer, that's our plan. If you don't just come in and clean it once, you've got to go back every week or two and pick it up again. It starts at the armory, right by the veterans' flags. There's a big round garden there that hasn't been put together in a long time. That's probably the biggest project. And then the bridges, and you'll see them along... If you get, I've got several of these maps that I'll leave at the city office. So, the plan is, we have a little letter that gives you some rules. Al's been kind enough to put his phone number there, so if you want to change the plants, you need to run through him first. And Mary Kidder, again, has numbers on the letter as well, and she's the garden club person, so if you want some suggestions for shade or sun. And it goes all the way through to the, to the dock. It has the Eagle Project, and then one, the last one, Nine and Ten, the base of Lakeside Park obelisk, those beautiful stone things that are there. There are two gardens there that you wouldn't even know. And Edgeview condominiums, where Mary lives, has already adopted those. So, we have still eight out there. I'm hoping families come, a church. The actual sign-up seat will be at the city office. Friends always are agreed to handle that, and you'd sign up for it. Mary Kidder will keep track if it's done properly, and call those people or email them if they think they need to go back. But I wanted, Al has some things that we can add to the garden, and when we want to start it, so I'm going to let him.
All right. Now, we have our annual Mayor's Lakefront Cleanup Project, which is going to be May 7th this year. You might want to put it on your calendars, and there, we're kind of hoping that folks sign up and maybe come out and initiate it then to take care of these different projects. We have, we have a lot of assets that we have been given or donated by stores, I don't know, can I say their name? Home Depot donated... Oh, I can't, okay, never mind. Home Depot donated a couple of pallets of wood-chipped mulch, and also some pavers, a lot of pavers. And we have rocks, we have, of course, plastic bags to help the folks go in as they're cleaning up, and we're going to, we're going to be able to support them in this. It's kind of a, I don't want to say the word tedious, but it's, it takes, it's very labor-intensive to go in and clean up these areas and keep them cleaned up, when, you know, our parks have been expanded so much, and they're, and they're such a big part of the city. And, you know, now it goes from Sunnyside to 13th Street, technically, basically, there, and everything in between. And so, we've, we just keep, we keep doing it. And Linda and her friends came up with this idea, and I just thought it was terrific, because I will take volunteers any time to help. And we get, I'll give you another, for instance, the volunteers we get, Rex Air annually gives their, some of their employees a day's wage. Rex Air, annually, gives their, some of their employees a day's wage to come out and work in the parks. We will end up with twenty, twenty-five people in, over a two-day period, helping us, uh, clean up in the parks and get that, get that going. And of course, this year, it's gonna be a little different, because they're modifying the pavilion area right now. But, uh, I, I think this is just a fantastic idea, and I look forward to working with them, so...
Thank you. I'll have the paperwork at the city office tomorrow, so we'll have that. And it includes a map, and the directions, and the phone numbers, and the sign-up sheet, so, uh, hopefully, we'll see what happens. It's a win-win if it works, so why not?
Absolutely. It's an exciting way to get people out in the community, you know, socializing, fellowship, all doing something that they enjoy, and making a huge difference for the city and the people who live here.
And a huge advantage, starting at the Mayor's Cleanup, is that the city crew is there to take all the bags away, whatever you have, and help, so it's a good day to start it.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And then it's really good.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the last community spotlight tonight is a presentation from the Wexford-Missaki Child Protection Council.
Hi. Um, I'm Karen Staub from the Child Protection Council, I'm the Prevention Coordinator, and, um, thank you for this, uh, to the City Council for, um, allowing me to come back this month and, um, tell you a little bit more about the Child Protection Council, and where we fall, and what we do, all that kinda stuff. Um, April coming up is Child Abuse Prevention Month, it's also Month of the Young Child and Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So April's always a big month, um, for awareness raising in the state of Michigan and nationally also. Um, the Wexford-Missaki Child Protection Council is the local council for the state of Michigan's Children's Trust Fund, and nationally for Prevent Child Abuse America. So that's kinda where we fall in the food chain. Um, our focus is on primary prevention of child abuse neglect, so that means we are trying to raise awareness to try to prevent abuse neglect from happening before, um, anything. Um, we do this through community education and awareness, programs, training, speaking engagements, um, all that sort of stuff, different programming that we're asked to participate in, we're always doing that. Um, some of the awareness efforts that are out there during the month are to try to bring awareness to the cost of child abuse neglect to our nation. Um, over eighty billion dollars a year is spent nationwide on child abuse neglect after it happens. Um, over two hundred thousand per child, um, per incident, that, that'll be like, if abuse neglect occurs, uh, for mental health services, um, to step in to investigate, all that sort of stuff. Uh, but prevention of child abuse neglect, um, so which would focus on more educational efforts and awareness efforts, uh, those cost between ninety-six to ninety-eight percent less. So focusing on prevention really does make more sense in terms of cost savings and raising healthy families and healthy communities in the end. Um, personally, I think that, um, the way we view child rearing is a little bit backwards, um, in our nation, not just in any particular community, but our whole nation. We need permission from the government to do just about everything. We need permission to fish, but nobody needs permission to have a child. Anyone can have a child, and that's the most important thing that anyone can do. Um, parenting is looked at more as a right instead of a privilege, um, and there's absolutely no training that goes along with it. It's the most important job that there is on the face of the earth, and there is no other job that there could be where you don't get at least some form of training. You can serve french fries in a fast-food restaurant, and you still have to go through training, but nobody has to do any sort of training in order to take that baby home to be a parent. And then, when abuse neglect occurs, we all step back and wonder how it happened. Um, funding for the, uh, Child Protection Council comes through the state of Michigan's Children's Trust Fund. Um, it comes through a public act, it was Public Act 252, where a trust was set up back in the early nineteen eighties. So we, the local councils throughout the state have been around since that time. There is a local council in every county through the state of Michigan that's funded through the Child, uh, Children's Trust Fund, and each county gets five thousand dollars per year to go towards prevention efforts. That is that county's whole budget. So anything else for child abuse neglect prevention has to come from the community. So whatever is important to that community, that's what's done in that area. So, um, funding, you know, locally is very important. Um, I did pass out folders for all of you to take home, um, there's no way, yeah, there's absolutely no way I wanted to try to go through everything in here. Tonight, so please take it home, go through it. There is a little bit of information on, in there, um, about the Pinwheels for Prevention Campaign, which I did talk about last month, and I did bring a sign, 'cause there was some questions. There's will be the signs that will be up after our walk. Um, there's flyers in there for our walk, which is gonna be on April 5th, um, starting at nine AM at Toy Town. So we'll just do walk down the one block to the corner of Harrison Mitchell, and plant the pinwheel gardens there, which will stay up for the remainder of the month, and then walk back again, and that'll be it. So, um, pinwheel gardens go up, not just statewide, but really nationwide. Um, so if you're out in the community and you see anyone, that's what they stand for, for preventing child abuse neglect. So if anyone has any questions for me, you can always get ahold of me, through the Child Protection Council, and, um, be happy to answer. I mean, does anyone have any questions now?
No.
You're good?
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Pinwheel.
Yes, and you got your pinwheels too.
It's all your hard work.
Thanks.
Okay, we do have a proclamation this evening. Will you be receiving the proclamation?
Will I do what?
Receive the proclamation?
I would.
Okay.
Sure.
You wanna just come up, is that okay? Here, you can come up here, and we can reach it. Okay. Okay, this is Mayor Proclamation from the City of Cadillac. Whereas young children are the future of our community, and whereas one-third of children entering kindergarten in Michigan lack some of the skills needed for success, and whereas success in school is highly predictive of success in adult life, and whereas young children and their families depend on high-quality programs that provide for their care and for their education, and whereas the City of Cadillac wishes to join with the Wexford-Missaki-Mannassee Great Star Collaborative and its member agencies in the celebration of April as the Month of the Young Child. Now therefore be it proclaimed that April 2016 is declared Month of the Young Child in the City of Cadillac, and all citizens are invited to duly note this occasion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Bye. We do have some more seats, if anyone would like to come in and sit down. Can we do a little bit of public hearing?
Sounds good. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The first public hearing tonight is a public hearing to consider approval of a resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-04 that amends the city's zoning map. Accordingly, John Wallace, our Development Director, is here this evening to provide the introduction.
Chris, you have the chair and desk open, please. Surprisingly, we're now probably closing in on almost a year since the formal processing of the Cadillac Junction, uh, project, uh, from its first anticipation of being planned for and considered in the master plan, through all the steps in, in the zoning. Uh, in April of last year, when I first came on board, we were in the advanced stages of the approval of the master plan. I think in, in May, uh, that plan was, uh, was approved. Following the master plan approval, which set the stage for, uh, mixed-use development on the Cadillac Junction site, um, we discovered that we really didn't have a process for considering a mixed-use zoning planned unit development. So the next step in, in that process, of course, was to go through that process, which required both the Planning Commission and the City Council to, uh, consider, uh, language to be added to the zoning ordinance, which was to create a mixed-use planned unit development district. Uh, what that district would do, and is doing now, once it was adopted into the city's zoning ordinance, was allow developers, uh, at sites above twenty acres that may be in a location that could take advantage of a mixed-use development to apply to the city, to, uh, apply for such a project, uh, as part of a planned unit development process. For those of you that, uh, aren't real familiar with a planned unit development, it, it more or less is really kind of, uh, customized zoning. It's looked at, uh, on a site-specific basis, takes advantage in many respects from the existing zoning ordinance, but also then, uh, takes advantage of, uh, special studies and research, uh, to have a certain amount of back and forth between the developer and the city, to, uh, balance out the desires of the developer with the desires of the city to have, uh, a better quality development. Uh, after the, uh, PUD district was created, of course, uh, we started the process for the application to the PUD, uh, on the part of, uh, the Terry D. Development for Cadillac Junction. Uh, as part of this process, the, uh, process involves, uh, for the developer to apply to the city to rezone. So they file an application. That application, in addition to the, the standard paperwork for the application, requires that they also submit a sketch plan. That sketch plan lays the foundation for the actual development, uh, that will occur on the property. It sets in motion where the roads will be, the approximate density, uh, approximate parking counts, and a number of different things. It sets in motion that the appropriate, uh, utility infrastructure is in place. Uh, but, in a sketch plan, it anticipates that you can't read the, uh, future in its entirety, and, and, uh, over time, the developer might be working with different concerns to build the project. And that being the case, there, it leaves room for, uh, not substantially moving the uses around, but, uh, perhaps looking at slightly different variations of the uses within the areas that were allocated for those uses. Um, so that, that's kinda the process. When they submitted the sketch plan to the city, in addition to my own review as Community Development Director, I referred the plan to the, uh, all the department heads. That would include, uh, Cities Engineer, uh, Utilities Department, Fire Department, Police Department, and we all looked at these plans, uh, for the development, the sketch plan, from our own perspectives to make, to make sure that the, uh, plan met all our infrastructure standards and requirements for the city. And, uh, actually, in the course, uh, two major meetings with the developer, we went through the plan and covered a lot of different topics, made several major changes to improve the, uh, plan, uh, finalized that they were using the right size, the utility mains, the right materials. Uh, we upsized the private roads in the development. Uh, we went over the details of what the landscaping would be on M-55. We required some additional emergency access points to, uh, better facilitate the, uh, senior independent living, uh, facility area for the development, and made a number of, uh, improvements, uh, to the plan. Uh, those meetings, uh, went well between the city staff and the developer, and there was a, a really nice, uh, back and forth in terms of advancing the project in the right way to serve, uh, both of our needs. Following the department heads being satisfied with the plan, uh, it then moved to the Planning Commission, uh, which held its public hearing, uh, their last meeting. Uh, on your table is a summary of the, uh, public comments that were made, uh, at the Planning Commission's public hearing, so you'll, you'll have those. And of course, you're holding your own public hearing this evening, so you'll be able to compare the comments that were made at that time to the comments that would be, uh, made this evening. Uh, the Planning Commission then, following the public hearing, uh, took their vote and, uh, voted to recommend to the City Council that they, uh, approve the rezoning application and sketch plan, and, uh, do so with a number of conditions. Uh, you also have before you a resolution, which includes all of the conditions that were recommended by the Planning Commission, and at the very beginning, in the first three or four items, there are some other potential conditions, um, that were brought up in some of my briefing sessions, uh, with council members, uh, for concerns that were raised, uh, in preparation for tonight's meeting. And, uh, those conditions are open for discussion after the, uh, public hearing is closed, to decide whether you want to continue finalizing those conditions or delete those conditions. But I thought it would be better to have them on paper, so at least we have a starting point for discussion. Uh, then, uh, the public hearing tonight, uh, before the City Council, following that public hearing, then the council is free to take a vote to, uh, approve the rezoning. If the council should approve the rezoning, then that, uh, creates the actual zoning designation on the map. It also, uh, then allows the, uh, developer to eventually submit on final site plans for the project. Prior to submitting final site plans, the, um, city and the developer would have to come to terms on a final development agreement. Uh, that more or less is, uh, putting in definitive terms some of the more subtle points of the development, more of a policy-oriented, uh, issues, and, uh, of course, the Planning Commission and the City Council would have the opportunity to review and approve of the development agreement. And it's then after the improvement and the execution of the development agreement, that the developer then would be free to sell property off to various development interests, and to have those interests, uh, submit to, uh, the city for a final development, uh, plan and, and construction. That being the case, uh, the final site plans, uh, while I don't believe they require a public hearing, would require both the Planning Commission and the City Council approval to, uh, to be formally, uh, approved, and before construction could start on any of the individual, uh, developments. Um, I think that's kinda outlines where we've been, and where we're going, and what the completion of the process is. I would like to just take a few more minutes to discuss, uh, probably what was one of the biggest topics of discussion at the Planning Commission meeting and public hearing, uh, before the Planning Commission, which was consideration of the M-55, uh, landscape buffer. And I'll be using some of the, some photos and sketches for that. I wanted to demonstrate what the prevailing design standard or development pattern has been, uh, in the, uh, Boone Road area. And as you, uh, watch these pictures, what you'll see is that in most cases, there's a general absence of any landscape buffer. And beyond there not being landscape materials, there is also, uh, not, uh, any allocated area for future landscaping to be added. In fact, in some cases, the private development paved their parking lot all the way into the, uh, street right-of-way, which I was kinda surprised to see that. But, um... But, I'm just trying to set the context for what is prevailing in the area, and where we are going is trying to move a step or two beyond that in terms of the quality. You'll see in these sketches, and these were sketches that were presented at the planning commission meeting, and they had a sketch-up model present at that, at that meeting to demonstrate the quality of what was going to be done. You can see in the yellow line there that there's a considerable amount of landscape area that will be used for just excess right-of-way. It's the same kind of areas that you saw on Boone Road that was being used for drainage and so forth. Beyond that area, which is considerable, there's 150 feet of right-of-way at the, between the ramps and the entry to the development. And each lane is only approximately 12 feet wide. So, at a three-lane or four-lane, you're only looking at using about a third of the right-of-way to install transportation improvements. And so, that means that depending on the traffic study that is currently being done by the developer that will be submitted to MDOT, it is highly likely that anything MDOT may require would fit within the existing right-of-way. What does that mean? We can in confidence go forward knowing that the 40-foot landscape buffer which you see in this slide will not be intruded into through an expanding right-of-way to eat that buffer up and not exist for the benefit of the aesthetic of the corridor or blocking the impacts to the development. Now, that landscape buffer at 40 feet, typical rise to a berm is one foot of rise for three feet of width. And with that, you won't, to even go three feet, you only need about 18 feet of width. So, there's plenty of room to berm to whatever the final height desired for that landscape buffer would be. I believe the developer is proposing about two and a half feet of berm, and then probably another two or two and a half feet with vegetation. So, essentially looking at a four or five-foot high buffer, which should buffer above the hoods of vehicles and so forth, should effectively block out any light transmission either into the roadway or to the properties across the street. So, I just wanted to cover that. If you want to go to the next one, you can see the orientation. The overall design concept between property that MDOT has with the woodlots that you see along the freeway, effectively screen the development from the freeway except for a small view shed as you approach the off-ramp. And you'll also see that they designed the mixed-use planned unit development to have the residential portions abut the large, single-family neighborhoods adjacent to the east of the project, so that essentially those homes would only be looking into other residential development, and then also be looking into heavily wooded area, and so largely would be unable to see the commercial side of the development. And these are just more views. You get an idea from eye level of what would be seen. Now, of course, if, you know, you can get down to micromanaging, do you want five feet or five and a half or four, you know, we can set those, those final heights. But we want to be careful that we don't go too high, because as Chief Goldknight talked about last hearing, we want to be careful that we don't block so many site views that we raise an issue of potential increased opportunity for crime as part of the SEPTED principles. I want one last thing to show you. This is an actual case study of somebody who did exactly what we're talking about. This is down in Grand Rapids Township. They had a commercial plaza down there. I think they achieved this buffer in about 20 to 30 feet, so they achieved the buffer in a little less space than what we're allocating for our buffer. And you can see it pretty much does what we talked about it doing in concept with the sketch-up model, which is effectively to block out most of the view of the cars, but you would still be able to see the sign banding on the building. And much like in this development where the buildings are setback, our setbacks for our development are 75 feet from the right-of-way line, not the roadway, but from the right-of-way line. So, it would look much like you see in this picture. And then from the air, you can see the width, and if you see those parking spaces, they're 20 feet. So, you can see that the buffer for the berm area is roughly about 25, 30 feet. But in a 40-feet area, you can easily achieve this effect going forward. So, I just wanted to give kind of a real case scenario of what is involved in that and demonstrate that you can effectively screen the development in the manner that we proposed. And also, we went through a very formal process when we adopted the mixed-use PUD zoning district to discuss at length both the building setbacks and the landscape buffers, and agreed at that time that it was the appropriate level of protection for the development. So, with that, I think that sets the tone. I don't really want to go through the resolution at this time or conditions. I think that would be best if I come back up after the public hearing. We can talk about how we might want to refine those conditions. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public comment, and this public comment
Good evening, council members, mayor. My name's Nate Swiger. I live at 10534 Pine Grove Drive, right across from the property that, that is proposed to be developed. First and foremost, I want to thank Mr. Wallace for his nice pictures. But, you know, in looking at them, what they failed to show was any houses across the street from any of those developments. It looked like the areas were all zoned like on both sides of the road. I didn't see my house in any of them. I didn't see anybody else's houses in any of them. I don't know how you can use those pictures to say, "This is what it's going to look like," when there are absolutely no residential houses in those pictures. You know, he says this goes back almost a year. It goes back longer than that. It goes back to when the property was still within the township. And at that time, it was voted upon. The township said, "No, we do not want to see this rezoned. We do not want to see it, and we do not want to see it developed." Mr. Vanderlan didn't like that decision. He didn't like what the public had to say, so he goes to the state boundary commission. They come up, and they say, "Okay, annex it into the city," you know. So, he gets his way there. You know, this, and he talks about, you know, this mixed PUD development. I really hope that you question where else within the city proper currently can that zoning classification be used with a 20-acre minimum, contiguous minimum, not divided by roadway, not divided by an alleyway. I think they assume these efforts would be better spent on filling the vacant commercial properties that already exist within the city versus expending effort and taxpayer money on developing areas elsewhere. We're not against development, we're just against the commercial development in our neighborhood. You know, zoning is meant to protect neighborhoods. When we purchased our home 15 years ago, now, the county forefathers had designated that area to remain residential, and, you know, we trusted them, and, you know, now, now this is happening. But, you know, I, I trust that, that you all, when you purchased your homes, looked at the zoning and looked at your neighborhoods and said, "You know, hey, I like, I'd like to live here." You know, what, how would you feel if this were to happen in your neighborhood or next door to you?
Please, please.
Okay. I hope, I hope that you'll take all of our concerns into consideration in your decision-making regarding this property, and just hope that you'll, you keep the development contiguous out there and, and like. Thank you.
I'm 93 years old, so I hope I can stand this long. But anyway, I, I bought property out there east of Cadillac in 1961, and I built a house there. I've been there ever since, and I love that area. And I am so happy to see a development come out there. There used to be a gas station and many businesses along in there, and now, there's no gas station. It's just all housing. And I think it's just about time that the business moved to the east of Cadillac. It's going south and every other direction, but the east has not had anything. And now, there's developing going east of my place, and I'm anxious to see this get going, because I think these people have waited long enough to get something going on this property. And I think it's going to be good for Cadillac, because we need jobs, we need a gas station out there, and we need businesses. And after I retired, when I was 64, I worked at Walmart till I was 85 and a half. And I've heard that Sam's wants to come in there, and I'm all for that. Sam's is a good place to shop. And people who don't like it, that live close there, I would suggest that they move, because when George Mitchell started Cadillac, it was nothing but forest. And then businesses came in, and people who lived there had to move out. And that's what has to happen here, too. People who don't like it should move, because we need that development. And I'm happy to see it come, and I hope it succeeds. Thank you. My name is Mamie Guthrie, and my address is 11099 East M-55, and I'm right near the development, and I am all for it. Thank you.
I'm going to speak very briefly, because I think many of us have been up here many times over the last 10 to a dozen years, in various places, various meetings around the townships and in the city. My name is Randy Harris. I live at 10615 Pine Grove Drive. I'm in the neighborhood of Nate. I really only want to say three things, there are just three short things. One is that one of the slides Mr. Wallace showed recently, he showed you some rather mature trees on that setback, and we've been recently informed that those mature trees would be a real issue for sightlines if there were going to be criminal activity. This is all sounding very exciting, isn't it? Got to keep our lines open for criminal activity out there. But the fact is, there are these mature trees in that picture from Grand Rapids Township, but there are no mature trees in this diagram at all from the developer. Some more growth besides low hedges would probably be somewhat beneficial. The second thing I'd like to say is, I still believe the setback is too slight. The word used several times tonight by Mr. Wallace is considerable, but 40 feet isn't that far. I can throw a ball that far yet. 40 feet is not very far for a setback when you have residential right across the road. Some of the other things we ought to consider tonight. The third thing we ought to consider tonight, of course, is there are lots of emotions on both sides of this. We've just recently heard that. But I'm not going to move, and I don't think any of us should have to move when a development could accommodate what is in the neighborhood already. Thank you.
My name is Haley Swiger. I'm the daughter of Nate Swiger, and I live at 10534 Pine Grove Drive, right across from this proposed development. And I was looking through your agenda tonight, and I noticed that you have your core values of acronym Rite, Respect, Integrity, Trust, and Excellence. And so, I would encourage you highly to live up to these core values that you have put here. I respect the fact that you are willing to listen to my and our concerns against this development. Please carry out your decisions with integrity, honesty, and fairness. We trust that you will make the right choices concerning this development in order to preserve the excellence of the city of Cadillac. And that's all. Thank you.
I'm Bob Swiger, and Nate is my son, and Haley is my granddaughter. I have one question, and this has been looming for quite a while. I understand there's an appeal before the Supreme Court on this whole PUD or this development. And it's surprising that all of this is going on with the idea that this is all going to take shape here real quick. I've read in the paper that as soon as you make your decision, if you make your decision tonight to say, "Yes, we're in favor of this mixed PUD," that the ground is going to be broken, and there's going to be development starting this spring or early summer. And my question is, how can you begin any of this? How can you even approve a site plan? How can you approve any of this until this appeal has been approved or disapproved, whichever, by the Supreme Court? If there's something out there that you people know, or Mr. Vanderlan, or Mr. Wallace knows, the rest of us obviously are not in the loop here. So, my question is again, how can any of this take place before this is resolved? And that's my question. So, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
I'm Jim Vanderlan from Terry D LLC, the developer for Cadillac Junction. With me tonight, I have my partner, John Cucci, and our wives, Terry and Dee, with us. Couple things have come up here with the public comment here, and we can address the last one. There is no appeal at the state Supreme Court. The appeal, what is at the Supreme Court is they're asking, we have one at every court level all the way. They have no more appeals- They have no more appeals left. They are asking the Supreme Court to hear the case. There's two cases in front of them. One is a case where the townships are suing the S B C, that they don't have the authority to do what they've done. And two is where we sued the townships because Clam Lake contracted out their zoning to hearing township to stop our project. Both those cases have been appealed through the whole process and now are in front of the Supreme Court where they're asking the Supreme Court, which is called a leave of appeal, to ask them to hear the case. They have to win both, they have to have the Supreme Court listen to both those cases. And we're taking a business and there has been no stay. It was denied. The stay of our project was denied by Judge Vagerman here at the Circuit Court level. It was denied that they stopped our project. So that's the situation there with the court, Supreme Court. Couple of other things have been brought up with regards to the legal process that, you know, we did get voted down by the township. But the legal process, our system allows, that's why we have the State Boundary Commission. That's why we have it. And we went to them and they have agreed with us. So that, we did not do anything illegal, immoral, wrong. We did it what the system allowed. And we've been at this for ten years. What they also don't tell you, our opponents, you know, they want it to be developed as residential. Before we started this whole process, it was zoned forest recreation through the county. Forest recreation allows for several commercial developments, things to be developed there. One of them is gas stations. So they don't want a gas station across them, but we could have had that with the county zoning, the current zoning that was on there. So I just want you to consider those things. We appreciate, you know, we've tried to accommodate all input. They talk about the buffer we have offered to accommodate on the buffer of planting some evergreen trees on the north side of the road. You know, the buffer is forty foot, which is substantial, but there's also a hundred and fifty foot road right of way there. Yep. So I just appreciate that. Just wanted to respond to some of those comments. Thank you very much.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment, the public comment portion of this public hearing.
Mayor, at this point, I'd like our Development Director to provide the City Council a walk through of the conditions. And that may help with Council's schedule.
The resolution before you is a resolution to adopt the ordinance amending the city's zoning map and approval of the sketch plan. At the Planning Commission meeting, through the course of much discussion, it was decided that there were a number of conditions that probably should be attached to the approval. And the Planning Commission, in turn, is recommending that the City Council also use those same conditions. In addition to the Planning Commission recommendation for conditions, there was also a few items that came up in briefing sessions that I had with some of the council members. And I wanted to at least get those on the table in a textual format so that we can talk about, see them and see how they're currently worded and see the appropriate way to either revise or delete or change those conditions in some respect. The first one would be A, and the developer shall control the parking lot lighting when businesses are closed for the evening by doing the following. And in reality, probably what would happen is the Planning Commission for this one, if that was the desire to have some impact on the lighting after the close of business, we would do that as part of the final site plan review in that the Planning Commission and the City Council will have the authority to take action on the final site plans. We could talk through what the lighting plan is for individual developments. And we could make as part of that approval of the final site plan, how they would run their lighting. And of course, that could include asking of their design consultants, could lights be dimmed or could we certainly have the lights being on different banks and perhaps only have half the lighting banks on to dramatically dim the light? We certainly don't want the development to be in darkness because I think that would certainly add to crime. And then, of course, the lighting probably attached directly to the building above the doors and loading areas, that would probably stay on just as a security matter. But I think there probably is some opportunity to reduce light and I would certainly be happy to explore that as part of the, it might be more appropriate to take it out of this condition and simply keep it, you know, in the forefront of our minds as we go to the final site plan approval. Because until we get there, we have no idea how many lights are even being proposed. So it'd be hard to determine how many should be on or off if we really don't know where they're going to be or how many there will be. B, I think there's a certain amount, it makes sense. If you look at the front buffer, it's certainly something that has a lot of attention drawn to it. It's certainly something that we want to get right. We want to make sure it's set at the right height. And that it be designed in a way that is attractive not only to the development, but as a gateway into the city. And the way to do that would be to have a uniform design for the buffer so that we don't have radically different tree types, radically different plant types. And we have plants and trees that make sense for the environment that they're being planted in and that they all work together. Also, that the buffer be managed by either the developer or a development group that would oversee long-term development issues for the project. In this way, there could be a contract on some periodic basis to make sure that the landscape buffer was kept clean and it was healthy. And if materials died, those materials could be replaced. So I think B makes a fair amount of sense. C, at the Planning Commission, we discussed an open-ended period for the trail sidewalk. It's our thought that ultimately, there will be a desire to have people be able to walk and bike on the M fifty-five corridor. It was my recommendation to have a ten-foot path. And that, but my concern was, you know, is it currently safe to cross from the city, cross the freeway, to use this pathway? I didn't want to encourage people to cross on a pathway that maybe isn't quite ready to be in full use or promoted use. And so I was a little cautious. I love the idea of the path and the bike trail. But we were, we set it up at the Planning Commission that the city, at whatever future date, whether it be two years, five years, whatever, that when we thought it was appropriate and that the conditions were right, that people could safely come to the site, that that city could order that pathway installed and that it would be done at that time. There's been a suggestion that maybe instead of an open-endedness, that we tie it to a timeframe such as five years. You can make an argument for that position. And so, and maybe it would encourage even that we work towards making sure that it's safe as it crosses the freeway during that time. So that's in there. It can be discussed and decided upon. Number D, or letter D, the, it seemed to be, I think for the most part, maybe not amongst all, but it seemed like there were some that thought the acceptance of assistance with landscaping, the private, landscaping on private lots of the homeowners to the north, that the developer offering some assistance in the way of materials or some other assistance would be a welcome addition. The benefit of putting landscaping on the private side and not the commercial side is that most of your noise impacts are going to be coming from the roadway. They're not going to be coming from the project. Traffic will be moving very slow in the project. There'll be very little noise. And the landscape buffer will largely block the lighting impacts and the visual impacts. So, and besides that, the closer you move landscaping to the observer, the more pronounced the impact of doing what it's supposed to do. So that this condition states that we in some way, as part of this approval, define in some way what that assistance amounts to. And in defining that, that assistance could be made as part of the development agreement. Number E, and this was one of the Planning Commission recommendations, that we would wait for the transportation study to be done by the developer's engineer. And the developer's engineer would then relay that study to M dot. M dot staff, both in Traverse City and Lansing, have been looking at this project. They could look at that traffic study and decide what, if any, improvements would this development entail or cause them to spend money to put in or the developer to put in. And these improvements might be additional lanes, could be signalization, those types of improvements. But we would depend on M dot making that determination in conjunction with the review of the traffic study being done by the developer. And that the costs associated with what was attributed to the development by M dot would then be borne by the developer. Further, also with M dot, there's a requirement that this development not release water into the freeway right of way at a rate faster post-development than it does pre-development. And so, and the M dot representative, I believe, was here at the last meeting and indicated this, that they would be reviewing the drainage plans to make sure that the calculations that the developer were presenting would give them the confidence they needed that that situation was the reality, that water was not being released into the freeway right of way after the development than it was prior to the development. So that the development would need that final sign-off from M dot to actually have final approval for the project. There's also discussion that there would probably be a future need potentially, we don't know, that the property to the south of Terry D may develop. One of the reasons for Terry D Boulevard being eighty-six feet in width is it could accommodate up to five lanes if necessary. And we certainly didn't want to talk, even think about channeling high-traffic volumes through residential areas. So we wanted to make sure that there was an ability moving forward, if somebody should propose something south of the development, that the city had the ability to extend that right-of-way to the south. And so the development agreement would contain language that would provide for the Terry D development to grant the extension of that eighty-six feet of right-of-way to the south line at such time as it would become necessary. Also, on the parking for the development, I spent a lot of time looking into this. I evaluated parking count numbers for all the retail on Boone Road. I purchased the I T E Parking Generation Manual from the Institute of Traffic Engineers, reviewed everything that they were proposing in terms of its parking counts. And everything that they've submitted as part of the sketch plan is consistent with what this manual and my field studies indicate. Our own ordinance calls for a dramatically higher number of parking, but the P U D process allows us to set the parking more in line with reality. And so we're able to greatly reduce the amount of parking and runoff for the project and still have it adequately serve the development. And because we don't know exactly the nature of the restaurants that will be going into the development, this particular provision or condition says that we will reserve the right at the final site plan approval to reestablish the exact number of parking that each of these businesses would require to get their final approval to go in with their final site plan. And kind of an obvious one, I, that the city and the developer successfully execute the development agreement, which lays forth some of these major issues that we've talked about from a site plan perspective. But it also deals with a few more housekeeping minutia kind of details that really have to be addressed in the development agreement just so that there's no misunderstanding on how we move forward. That that development agreement be executed successfully between the developer and the city. And of course, that would also require the Planning Commission review and City Council review before any final site plans could be submitted. So there's that other added protection that we'll have everything pinned down before anybody can even bring forth a final site plan. And J, it's just an added protection. I don't think it'll happen. I think it's saying here that once the traffic study is done, that will give M dot the information they need to project future improvements. We'll probably ask that they review those future improvements or tell us what those future improvements are. Make the final determination that they fit within that hundred and fifty feet of right-of-way, which I feel fairly confident they will. But on a wild chance that they don't, all we're really saying here is that we'll protect that forty-foot buffer, that if there is an extension of the right-of-way, that forty feet will start from that future extension. It won't start from the existing one and run the risk of being eroded away by some future expansion of the roadway. And that basically covers all the conditions, both the ones that the Planning Commission recommended and some of the things that I heard in meetings with the council members. So I guess with that, you could discuss those conditions. The city's legal counsel is here. If you have any questions from a legal perspective, but be happy to answer any questions or deal with any of these issues that you might have. Thank you.
Sit down. Let me ask my question. The question was raised by somebody who spoke during public comment about maybe varying the size of the vegetation so that there, it allows for some tall trees as well as the buffer strip with shrubs. Has that been discussed?
I think in general it has, but we haven't finalized that. I think that's, that's one of those things in final site plan approval that we would, you know, that we would finalize. But I certainly think a certain number of the higher vegetation, you know, you wouldn't want to create a total screen, but to have some softening of the buildings, I think to have some, say deciduous, as well as the low-lining shrubs would certainly make a lot of sense. And we certainly have the ability to make that happen.
I think that that makes sense, especially along the highway.
You saw that in the Grand Rapids example. You saw that some of the side banding was blocked from the trees, but you could always still catch glimpses of the signs from different angles.
John, about the, across the street to the John, about the across the street to the north, across 55, there's been an offer to assist with a buffer for those folks over there that would rather not look out their back when they'll see the development. Is that, you know, the way this reads, is it just trees, or could it be a fence if they were looking for something like that? What's being offered?
Well, I think I'll let Mr. Vanderon speak to what his thoughts were at this time. I think certainly from the city's side, you know, we have some discretion on where we want to go with that, although from a legal perspective, I'm not sure we can mandate off-site improvements, but I'll leave it to the attorney to comment on that.
Correct. The approval should not be conditioned on an off-site improvement, but if the developer is willing to voluntarily do that, then we can reference that agreement in the resolution and look forward to working that out in the development agreement.
And if the lead in the discussion is a Planning Commission meeting, that they would offer to place mature trees on that side of the road.
And, yeah, if you want to hear from Mr. Vanderon, he could comment on the nature of that assistance if you... Do you have him here?
He's behind it.
What we're proposing over there for the six houses that are in front of the commercial area of the development, evergreen trees, eight-foot tall, we will give any of those residents up to six trees, and we'll transplant them. According to our landscape architect, you plant those trees at fifteen foot on center, because as they grow, they fill out, and that would fill up about ninety foot, six trees would. But we'll also, if they want to plant wherever they put six stakes, we'll put six eight-foot tall Conifer Christmas trees in that area. That's what we're proposing, so.
So you'll provide the trees and the plants?
We'll do it totally at our expense. We'll move the trees in there, we'll transplant them, but once they're in the ground, we're walking away and they belong to the owners.
So they need to be watered?
They need to be watered, that is correct, and they need to be cared for, but we will give them good, healthy, mature trees, eight-foot. And just also, we have Mr. Liptak here from MDOT for all those questions you got for him. I don't want him hiding in the corner over there, you know, and get away with it, so you can address your questions.
I thought he was hiding.
I know he was back there, but I thought we'd wait until we got to him.
John, you mentioned something about the lighting and about maybe not having that in and saving that for later time, but that's something that I don't want, I don't want to lose that, because that's a huge thing, that night lighting. And first of all, I know that we're asking for directional lights, so we're not going to have an orange glow light on the north end, but for, to be able to dim light, if at all possible, to keep something about that in here so that it doesn't get lost when things are moving along with that.
I have a suggestion, because that's really important to me, too. And it's a good question for you, is if we put that in here as a condition that the Planning Commission shall review the lighting design for each phase of the development to help minimize light pollution?
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable way to address that. We just can't address it in the ultimate detail we like, because we don't really know what's...
I have that idea.
But there is the wave before that. Certainly, we're going to have the chance, as they come forward with the infrastructure plans, to build the roads, whether they be the private roads or the public roads. Certainly, all the lighting in either the private or public street rights of way, we'll have a chance to review that and make sure it's of the proper technology to do all the shielding that we're anticipating.
Yeah, I think we understand the fact that it's going to be all of the specifics at every step of the way. We're going to have the Planning Commission go over it, and we're going to have the opportunity to go over it, but for this initial document coming out of the gate, I think that we're saying we just don't have a really started at even the beginning.
Okay. I think that makes sense.
See, also, and for B, that's dealing with, like, maintaining the buffer area, that's, you know, when you drive on Boone Road, there's so much trash, there's plastic bags, there's garbage everywhere, and is that what B addresses, that a maintenance, somebody will be maintaining that, making sure that there isn't trash blowing across the street?
Right. Well, number one, that they would provide a unified design plan, and it might go in in conjunction with the different businesses, but you would know in advance that it was all going to be in harmony, because it would all be designed to work with the entire buffer, so it would be very nicely crafted to be what it should be, as an entire entity, even if it comes in in pieces. But then beyond that, there would be a requirement that either the developer or a development association have ongoing responsibility to maintain the buffer in the way that it was approved, and then there could also be something, that some periodic review of the buffer, whether it be monthly or whatever, that it be maintained, you know, debris-free. I mean, you're not going to, on a daily basis, keep it totally free of debris, but that it never become a real noticeable issue, in other words.
So do we have the requirement in your alternative, where people have a buffer, that they have to keep the garbage picked up?
Well, I'm not sure that we do, because we very, I'm not sure how many P U Ds we even have in the city at this point. And this is, right, and this is one of the reasons why you do a P U D, because it's kind of a different kind of development process with a different entity. And when you do individual developments that aren't part of a P U D, they are designed all to themselves, as a separate, one little project is all off on its own, doing its own thing. Here, you have an entry to an entire development, and you could see why you might expect it to have some uniformity, that it doesn't, you know, you didn't have totally different landscape themes every hundred or two-hundred feet, so.
I agree, it'd be important to have either the developer or an association be responsible for that, otherwise, every business that comes in, if they're responsible for the buffer in front of their business, it wouldn't be maintained to the same level all the way down.
Right, and it's important here, because of the residential across the street, that as this landscape material, if any of it should start to die, that it just not accumulate so that eventually that buffer disappears. We wouldn't want that to happen.
Right, and I think to Councilmember Schipper's point, though, the garbage is going to be, it's going to be an issue that we haven't dealt with before, so.
And this would apply to what's on the private property. I don't know what MDOT's going to require for drainage, whether it be culverts or enclosed. When you have culverts, of course, you know, what happens in the public right-of-way would not be the developer's obligation, but certainly, any debris accumulating on private property on that berm could be, so just be aware that, you know, there's a difference between the public realm and the private realm.
John, I had a question about the sidewalk in front, too, and here it's suggested like a five-year term, and I'm wondering if it'd be better to look at it more in regards of after a certain number of properties are sold. For example, what I'm getting at is, there's going to be a gas station there initially, there's not going to be a lot of increased traffic, and maybe not the need for it, and I know the developer probably needs to sell some property to have the money to do that, but there are other than five years, if it should take off and they should sell three properties, four properties right off the bat, that that could be something that would key that, because I know myself personally, once that traffic picks up up there, I wouldn't want to be riding my bike on the highway. I'd rather have an avenue to get off to the east of there and have that sidewalk go down through to keep you out of the traffic.
Well, that's a very good point. I mean, you can look at this two different ways. This facility serves as a piece to a broader regional travel piece, but it's also in the fact that it's a mixed-use P U D, there's no reason to not think that somebody that might be living in the development might want to move around the development. And in that regard, you know, the idea that once a certain amount of development occurs, that that trigger it, it certainly plays into the argument that we see it as being a locally-used entity, even though it's going to plug into a broader regional one. And so, that would be another very logical way to think about what the trigger point would be for its installation.
I think that the majority of the Planning Commission, that's why it's in here, they felt pretty sorry about that, putting this side block and trail in there so that the project was committed to move forward, so if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I believe Rick addressed that also, that there's a safety issue across Noble 131, and we would be committed to at any time not, even past the five years. Once MDOT says they have the ability to cross the expressway, within twelve months, we'll have that sidewalk and trail in, and we'd leave that open-ended, not just a five-year plan. But at any time when MDOT says, you know, we can safely go across, we've got bike trail across there, we've got a walking, you know, and it's safe, and I believe that's how some of that conversation goes, you can verify it with Rick, but at any time when they say that it's a good thing to do, a safe thing to do, we'll put that sidewalk in within twelve months.
Okay. And the Planning Commission's concern was along the 55 corridor, along the front of it?
Correct. And in regards to the maintenance of that buffer, we have a declaration of restrictions that each occupant will be signing, and that's like a property owners' association that you talked about, for the maintenance of that and our entry sign, and that will be all part of that, to maintain that. And I can guarantee you that we'll also maintain the road right-of-way if we met up, you know, like John said, that we don't have to, you know, that's open-ended there, but I can guarantee you that we'll take care of that. As we've done the last ten years that we've owned that rock, both sides.
Counselor Berman, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to address, continue to have a little discussion about that sidewalk. I feel strongly that we need to figure out a way to make it a part of this project. I don't want to wait until there's a connector on both sides. I feel really strongly that any new development anywhere in our city has to have a sidewalk put into it, whether it's connecting right now or not, that's just how I feel about it, because otherwise, we're going to have the same argument on the other side about, well, we don't have anything to connect it to, we've got to start somewhere, and that's why I'd like to see it in there. But in response to waiting until MDOT says there's a safe passage across the freeway, it seems a little bit funny to me, because, you know, there's no rule that, or law that says you can't ride your bicycle right now on M55, and people are going to do it anyway. They're not going to wait for that declaration of safety. I mean, it'd be great if we could figure that out, but people are still riding their bikes, and so, like Counselmember Wolfisle said, you know, if it is real congested there, I'm going to want to get off onto that sidewalk as soon as I can and away from that traffic on 55. I do like your suggestion of maybe tying it to some phase of the development instead of years, because we don't know, but I do want to tie it in here that is required, and if it's not right up front, you know, we want to give the developer some time to sell lots, make money, or do whatever they have to do.
But I think initially with the Planning Commission, they would like to see that whole 55 frontage with a sidewalk right out of the gate, and then the development back into the property would happen as it progresses, is that correct?
Could you say that again?
Yes. One of the things that was important to the Planning Commission was that the property or the frontage along 55, they wanted a sidewalk along there when the project starts, and then the rest of it, as the development comes in, the appropriate sidewalks would be put in.
Right, right. The one that was the subject of the time discussion was the frontage one, and then, of course, as they build each piece of the public road system, those sidewalks would go in with each phase of the construction of the public roads, and then, of course, the private trail system that they proposed would go in with each development that they proposed as they built the apartments and all the other developments.
We'll agree to put it in within five years, whether there's a connection or not.
Can we, what number is that, what letter is it?
It's C.
Can we discard the part that includes that MDOT has determined that there's a safe and appropriate pedestrian-bicycle connection across the freeway, or, I mean, I don't want that to be a contingency.
Sometimes doing it helps make it safer, you know, and if there are people riding there now, I see people riding there now. Do we want to hear from Rick at the line?
Sure.
Yeah.
Want to address safety and life?
No, not particularly.
Well, I think we're on a agenda to get to, that's all.
I'm hoping to avoid this. My name's Rick Liptak, I'm with the MDOT Traverse City T S E, Wexford County is one of the areas that we now service out of that office. Yes, I have been involved with Jim and John with a lot of the discussion, I was at the last planning meeting, and the sidewalk, we do allow pathways and sidewalks in the right-of-way. The one thing that is, has to be thought through, and there has to be some kind of plan as to where it's going, rather than just in front of a piece of property, a piece of sidewalk, because if it isn't actually going somewhere, it creates a false sense of that it's functioning to do something, okay? So, it is a challenge to get over the freeway, there's no doubt about that. Like Grayling right now, they had a pathway going from Grayling out to Hartwick Pines. They were using the side of the highway bridge to get over. It wasn't the best condition, so now they've went ahead and they've gotten a grant, now they're building a separate structure over the highway. So, that is an ultimate-type thing, but here again, they had a plan of where to have the trail and things like that. So I guess before I would sanction some type of a walkway down through there, we're recognizing it as a pathway, and Counselor Berman is correct, you can walk or ride your bicycle on the sidewalk or on the shoulder of the road anywhere, but we can't designate it as a pathway until it meets criteria, an actual criteria for pathway or a sidewalk, so that's the sticky point.
Yeah, thank you.
You too. So, you would still have to see that sentence taken with it?
Yeah, I think initially part of the planning process, he's absolutely right, but if there's a contingent on a safe passage across the freeway, I don't know.
If I may just speak up, and perhaps I heard Mr. Liptak incorrectly, but it sounded to me that MDOT perhaps won't designate it as a pathway or a sidewalk, if it doesn't meet certain criteria that MDOT has, but that may not necessarily prevent the developers from putting in a sidewalk within whatever specified period of time council would require all along that front area of the property.
Right, so they could still do it, we don't have to have that sentence from you?
And it could obviously tie back to the future development itself, with the pathways that'll be a part of the build-out of the site.
I think the sentence before it takes care of it anyway.
Just for clarification, if someone could read that?
We just took the last sentence out.
Oh, C. The city attorney is taking some notes for the record.
Thank you.
And then, did you understand A?
Yes, here, if I may, I took the comments that were made and tried to put it into different language. The draft you have in front of you had a blank line. What I heard during the discussion was that council would like Planning Commission to review and approve the parking lot lighting during the hours when the businesses are closed, as each phase is approved. So what I would suggest is language that says, "The developer shall control the parking lot lighting when businesses are closed for the evening in a manner to be set forth in the final site plan." The final site plan each... The final site plan each phase, has a final site plan, and it has to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. So I believe that accomplishes the goals that I heard articulated.
And approved by the council.
And then it gets approved by the council, correct.
For me, it was more than parking lot lights, and it was more than just whether or not they were going to be dimmed in the evening. It, it was the whole way that the lights went, and in terms of direction, and...
Yeah, that, that, that will be automatic. I don't know that anybody anymore is trying to design to an old style. I think the, the whole market has moved to directional lighting, and certainly it's ingrained in the Planning Commission and staff, so I think we'll be taking a really strong look at that.
Yeah, and when I read control of the parking lot lighting, that's, that's where my mind goes, and the new and updated versions of how and why.
So this is in addition to that? Okay.
Right, but the council wanted to make sure this didn't get lost in the shuffle. I think if you watered it down and just said lighting, you could lose sight of this particular goal that you were discussing tonight.
Okay. For the, for the, uh, thoughts, if you can change on any of the other points?
No, I think they're, I think they're pretty well organized.
Counselor Member Reinhardt?
Yeah, mine is just lighting issue, which, yeah.
Okay, good. Okay, um, thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Are you in a point that you're comfortable making a motion?
Can I just say that, um, as early on, I've said that having any kind of development in the area in the hands of the City of Cadillac Planning Commission is a good thing.
There's my name and address, and I want you to have that, my address is in there. Okay, please, and thank you, Mary.
And so, the, the, between staff and the Planning Commission, and listening to the voices of our neighbors, and, and trying to make this as, as, as we grow and as we develop in our community, to make it something that is, as, I know it isn't a perfectly positive thing for everybody. My folks had a summer place in Wisconsin, and they built something right next to, and it used to be Wilderness, and my mom's been going there since the early 30s. And it was, it was a painful move, and it, it, it changes things. And things, things change. The community where she has her property, people listened and made accommodations to make it less impactful. And the night lighting and things like that make it so that we could still be out there and not have all this noise, and be able to have the campfires we want. Um, the, we all want to move in and close the door behind us sometimes. And for the folks living in our community, I have to say that the overall positives of this, and the masterfulness with which the, the staff and the Planning Commission have addressed all these things, I'm very proud to make the motion, to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-04, amending the city zoning map. Did you do that bit, one piece at a time, right?
Okay.
Okay.
Support.
Um, can I ask one question of our attorney, please?
Yes, of course.
Okay. Um, Mr. Swiger, Bob Swiger, had asked a question about the appeal. Did, um, the developer answer it correctly? And I just want to make sure he feels, he got the answer to his question, answered correctly?
Yes, Mr. Vanderlon answered it correctly, and I'll affirm two points of that. One is that it is an application for leave to appeal, not a pending appeal. The Michigan Supreme Court has to decide if it wants to hear a case. But more importantly for you, although there was a stay requested which would halt proceedings, the circuit court denied that stay. So there's nothing holding up the development.
Okay.
If I may make a recommendation with respect to the motion, that includes the full title item, I think it's, says the full title on the agenda, but the title itself is on the front of the resolution.
Okay, let me restate that then.
And the comment, uh, amended by...
Yeah. Thank you, thank you, I forgot that. Okay. So, um, I would like to amend my motion to, I don't know where I am, to make, be a resolution to adopt an ordinance, resolution number, what's the number? I need the number. 2016...
Oh, four.
Oh, four. Resolution to adopt an ordinance amending the city zoning map, and approval of the sketch plan.
With the...
With the amendment as noted.
Okay.
All right, I'll support that again.
Okay. So, we have a little coffee.
Councilmember Sippers?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, we'll stick with, to the second public hearing.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The second public hearing tonight is with respect to the consideration of approval of a resolution that would adopt ordinance 2016-02, amending section 22-96 of the Cadillac City Code regarding panhandling. Uh, we're here this evening to do the recent statutory changes of the state's essential personal statute, and how it impacts regulations at the local level. Uh, before you this evening, it's Chief Delmick of the Police Department to introduce this item.
He stepped up for him.
He stepped up for him.
With Mary Jeffrey. He's going to take her to her car, I think.
Oh, good.
Well, that's nice. That is nice. That is nice.
Would it be okay for us to move to C until he gets back?
Yeah, or, I was going to say, I can, I can comment on, I'll do it very briefly.
Very good.
Or, here you go.
Oh, there he is, okay.
Bob, you're up.
I see where I fit in this. Good evening, members of council, Mayor, uh, Mr. Meinhardt, welcome. Um, today I just want to take a minute here and talk about this proposed ordinance. So, as a part of the Cadillac Police Department's recent crime prevention initiatives, a review of local ordinances, specifically the panhandling ordinance, is undertaken. Since 2013, panhandling in and of itself has been a legal activity in Michigan. Uh, by way of this ordinance, we're only looking to regulate panhandling and its associated activities. Much like we do with other legal activities, such as consuming alcoholic liquor, this ordinance will restrict the when, where, and how one may panhandle within the City of Cadillac. These measures allow the community to address concerns of safety, vehicle and pedestrian traffic, protection of businesses and tourism, as well as fraud. Mostly, these restrictions will allow citizens to be free of aggressive and harassing tactics that disrupt their enjoyment of activities, and diminish their sense of safety and well-being while working, playing, or visiting in our city. I'm here tonight to act as a resource for you, and address any questions or concerns that the council may have. Thank you for your time and consideration for considering the passage of this ordinance.
The only thing I saw in there, I read through the ordinance, I think it makes perfect sense, you know, you can still ask, I guess, but you can't be aggressive about it, you can't follow, you can't pester, you, there's a lot of areas you can't stand nearby where people congregate, where you would be obviously a nuisance. Um, the only thing I saw in there that caught my attention was it talked about approaching drivers within traffic, which is, it's a safety thing. I've had that happen to me several times in larger cities, where you stop at a stoplight and come up your window. Where does that leave the fire department with the empty boot drive?
Well, this specifically talks about the solicitation of alms. So, alms is defined, and, uh, alms is defined as something, as money or food, given freely to relieve the poor. So in essence, there's a difference between a solicitation for the benefit of an organization versus one who is simply begging for money to, for food or themselves, right, precisely? So, whereas that solicitation would actually go to an organization to prevent someone from having to go out in the street and ask for money.
Want to take care of our firemen that aren't out there anymore, but...
Don't tell them that, I told them it's probably going to be okay, I haven't told them otherwise. Having a little fun with them.
Okay, any other questions? Thoughts, concerns?
No, the wording looked good.
Okay. Somebody, um, actually, we need to open the floor for, uh, public comment. I'll open the public hearing for anybody who would like to make any comments. As it pertains to this public hearing. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Uh, what's that? No, does anyone have any...
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-02, amending section 22-96 of the Cadillac City Code regarding panhandling.
Carrie, could we have a little call, please?
Here, Counselor Member Berman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Which will then take us to our third public hearing for this evening.
Please, it's your turn.
Please, it's your turn.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This last public hearing this evening is regarding hauled waste. Specifically, we're requesting consideration of a resolution that'll adopt ordinance 2016-03, amending chapter 42, article 4, division 9, entitled Hauled Waste. As previously commented on by Jeff Deaton, our utilities director, when we set this public hearing, the provision of this ordinance will amend our code to allow for outside waste to be accepted at our wastewater treatment plant. Not only will this potentially result in an increase in revenues from our, at our wastewater treatment plant, but it may also help the plant itself. The Director of Utilities is here this evening, should you have any questions for him, or I'm here as well.
Okay, before we get to that, we'll go ahead and open the floor for any public comment, as it relates to the hauled waste. Seeing none, we will close public comment. And, uh, would the council like to hear from Mr. Deaton? I don't have any questions. Okay. Good, good, okay? Okay. Um, could, is anybody comfortable doing a motion?
Yeah, I will. Uh, I will make a motion to approve resolution to adopt ordinance 2016-03, amending chapter 42, article 4, division 9, entitled Hauled Waste.
Just want to make sure, maybe I missed it, is anyone from the public here?
We already got it. I already got it.
Sorry, I missed it.
Just hit the wheel, Marcus.
Okay, good.
The part...
Okay.
Okay. All right, can we have a little call, please?
Uh, Counselor Member Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
All right, and we need to have an appointment this evening to the Board of Review. Um, as you all recall, um, we had filled this seat, um, Counselor Member Stevens held this for a very, very long time, and when he didn't run, um, our appointed Counselor Member actually took on the responsibility. And now, through our public vote, we have Counselor Member Meinhardt. So what does that mean? That means that we all have to have a discussion about who would be able to fill this role on the review board. And Marcus, if you can tell me just a little bit more, so...
Um, well currently, Counselor Member Wolfisle is appointed by the board, by, our this board, as our council, as our alternate to the board review. So we do need a permanent appointment or the board review, and I'm sure Carrie might correct me if I'm wrong, if you're still around.
Yeah, you got to.
Okay, meets about four times a year, if that sounds about right?
We meet in March, we meet in December and July, so three times a year.
And the meetings rotate from morning to evening?
Only in March.
Only in March, okay.
Correct.
And aren't they long?
Uh, we meet two days, uh, we meet in two days from nine to four, with an hour break, and then we meet from three to nine, one time in March, so three meetings, two days, one night.
So it's about, about three meetings a year?
Three meetings in March, and then we have a nine to noon in December, and about a nine to noon in July.
So it's five meetings a year.
So, here's the thing, is, uh, there's four of us that hold nine to five type of jobs, and then there's one of us that doesn't.
Well, not necessarily true. I am working, and I'm out of town three or four days a week, every week. That's why, that's why I accepted the alternate role, because I've gone a lot of town. So, I think I might be able to work again. I just have to work around my schedule at work.
Sure. Would they be able to accommodate?
Yeah, it's only three days a year, but the nine, the afternoon ones, no big deal.
Okay.
The other ones, I just have to either take vacation days or some active work in the end though.
And you'd be willing to do that, and with, remembering that Counselor Member Wolfisle is the alternate, so if he really ran into a hard spot, then you guys could talk about it?
Yeah, how, yeah, how does that, would we have the availability to work with each other to, I mean, is there a set process for when the alternate comes in, it could be just do that, look together on it?
I don't, you can work together? Yeah. That's great, thank you so much.
Well, I tell you, I tell you what then I'd be willing to do, you know, with, I wasn't thinking that John's working sometime too, so I'll work with John to, we'll split them up.
Perfect.
We'll make sure that, maybe we can each do 50% of them or something, and it helps us both. If that's, if that's a lot, we'll...
Yeah, that would completely be up to you guys, I'll find...
Now, you got two of us to train. So, yeah, okay, as alternate, I'll do as much as I can to work with John so that we make it fair for both of us.
Now, Carrie, how made that work, that, you know, they could get their feet wet before they actually get dropped into a meeting right away?
We meet tomorrow. We are here tomorrow all day.
Oh.
So if you want to stop in anytime tomorrow, or not, uh, the next time we will meet is in, um...
Oh, yeah, you're at the...
Yeah, next time will be, is December.
So it's best for them to just come to the first meeting and jump in and see what, see what goes on? Okay. Thank you so much, that's wonderful.
And I believe that former Counselor Member Stevens is on the commission, and he, he would, I'm sure, any questions you have, he would be a really great resource.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to appoint Counselor Member Meinhardt as the regular member to the board of review, for the term expiring on January 7, 2017. Support.
Can we have a little call, Carrie?
Sure. Counselor Member Meinhardt?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And Carrie, we have communications.
We do, we have a request to display a banner from April 4, 2016, to April 11, 2016, for the Month of the Young Child.
Make a motion to grant the, um, request for the Month of the Young Child banner as presented.
Spurts? Can we have a little call, please?
Counselor Member Sippers?
Yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Wolfisle?
Yes.
Meinhardt?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, the second one is to request to display a banner from April 11, 2016, to April 18, 2016, for the Wexford County 4-H.
And I'll make that motion to, um, approve the display of a banner from April 11 to April 18, 2016, for the Wexford County 4-H.
Second.
Can we have a little call?
Counselor Member Berman?
Yes.
Wolfisle? Wolfile?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries.
And the third and final request is to display a banner from April 18, 2016, to May 2, 2016, for the Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the display of a banner, uh, from April 18 to May 2, 2016, for Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
A second.
Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wolfile?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
City managers, with the...
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item on the report is a request to house chickens. As city council is aware, it requires, uh, city council approval due to our current code. Uh, chickens are defined as livestock. Uh, the request came in, uh, from a resident at 528 Aldrich Street. He desires to, uh, have six, uh, egg-laying chickens, uh, no roosters, um, at their property. Uh, the recommendation, uh, by, uh, staff is to approve this request, uh, to have up to six egg-laying chickens in cages within the, the rear yard of the residence, uh, and to not allow any roosters. I'm not sure if someone's here for that.
That's you?
Uh, it's you. Okay, thank you for sticking around. Um, members of council, it's up to you at this point.
You know, before we, before we do this, can we look into, 'cause these come up regularly? Can we talk about... I would really love to look into our code to codify somehow the keeping of egg layers in town. Um, and rabbits, probably. And probably rabbits, um, 'cause these come almost every ti, every time, and, and I know that, uh, I have family members who would love for...
To be able to have their own chicks.
Yeah.
Um, so I've just done my research, like, I'm breed specific, I'm clean, and I took off work, now my manager's probably gonna tell me. Um, but I just really, I don't think it's harmless. And I spoke to Mike Coy, and he even did, uh, aerial of my backyard, and if you look it up, which I came unprepared, I apologize for that, you'll see that it is a pretty big yard, and I'm still breed specific that the breeds I want are actually even a smaller chicken than what you would expect. We haven't even built the coop or bought anything, because we would like to get permission first, obviously. They will be well taken care of in a clean environment, it will serve the neighbors or anything like that.
Okay.
So, thank you.
So we can work on that coop?
Yay. Meanwhile, I'll make a motion to allow this young lady, Renee Miller, to keep up the six egg-laying chickens in cages within the rear yard of her residence at 528 Aldrich Street, subject to conditions noted.
A second.
Councilmember Minehart?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Have some. Tell, you need a note for your boss?
I actually, yeah, that would probably help my pace, but I'll be okay.
Okay, 'cause I'll put a time on here and sign.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next item is a recommendation regarding road salt for the 2016-2017 season. Uh, I know it may sound kind of funny, since we're just entering into spring right now, but just a good time that we need to, we need to secure our allotment. We're anticipating to need approximately fifteen hundred tons, uh, of road salt to cover the entire winter. Depending upon the final bid, uh, once, uh, once the state bids it out, we'll actually know what the costs are. This is something we've done, um, annually over the last several years, where we get councils authorization in advance. We do expect costs to be approximately a hundred thousand dollars, uh, and again, we're recommending that, uh, the City of Cadillac participate, uh, in the State of Michigan's MyDeal competitive bidding process and program to acquire the road salt for our next winter season.
So when we get these deliveries, is it, do we get a delivery and put it in this big building, or do, yes, so do we have a lot of salt left over this year?
There is some salt left over. Um, I'm not sure how much would be considered a lot. I think it might depend on everyone's interpretation. Uh, I asked that question as well when we put together this recommendation, uh, and the thought is, is to still, uh, acquire about fifteen hundred tons, which we do have the capacity to store indoors, so it won't go bad, so...
I just wondered, I was, I was just curious if we had a lot left over.
And we might need more by the end of this week.
Yeah, I see.
And I heard we're getting some sand to mix with it.
Um, we do mix the sand with it, and I believe this bid is just for the salt stuff.
Yeah. I understand that.
That's roughly what we get every year, is that down a little bit?
No, it's about, yeah, every year.
Because we want to be here really late. I'll make a motion to authorize the city to participate in the MyDeal com, competitive bidding process and approve the commitment to purchase up to fifteen hundred tons of seasonal road salt through the resulting State of Michigan contract at the unit cost bid approved by the State of Michigan.
Bert? Sorry. John, you gotta be quicker on the drop.
The later it gets, the faster it's going.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Councilmember Sippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This next request is regarding bids, uh, for the 2016 West Division Watermaine Project. Uh, three bids were received. The recommendation, uh, is to go to Dunbar Excavating, who came in at the lowest bidder, uh, in an amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars. We are requesting a ten percent contingency, uh, in an amount of seven thousand, one hundred seventeen dollars, also be approved as a part of your consideration this evening.
I'll make a motion to award the bid for the West Division Watermaine Project to Dunbar Excavating in the amount of seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy dollars with a ten percent contingency of seven thousand, one hundred and seventeen added.
A second.
Carrie, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Swolman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
Um, thank you, uh, Mayor, and members of the city council. Uh, this next item is a request by Wyoming Warehouse, uh, for industrial facilities tax abatement. Um, this is, um, I'm sorry, I did, I missed the, I apologize.
I don't know, let him miss that.
Yeah, you're right.
Like, oh, maybe we're not...
Uh, item D, uh, a bit of housekeeping. We are looking at scheduling a, uh, a special meeting for the purposes of having a budget work session on April 11 at four thirty P.M., and I figured that since we're all here this evening, uh, and we just, uh, sort of came up with the date, uh, late last week, I would just ask you guys all publicly to set the meeting, so... There is a Monday, and it's the Monday that falls between your first meeting in April and your second meeting here.
Yep.
Um, I'm gonna be in Boston, so...
You can go with that Thursday if you want.
The alternate date would be Thursday...
The fourteenth.
Yes, the fourteenth.
That's when I'm coming back from Boston.
All right. Put your foot to the pedal, everybody.
What time is, what time would the meeting be?
Four thirty.
Are you leaving yet?
Yeah. Yeah, driving. Okay.
Um, I can offer that we can certainly keep you and bring you up to speed with anything that you may miss, Councilmember Wolfile.
Well, if we, if you could set it for the fourteenth, if that would work for everyone, I will expedite getting back and could probably be here before the meeting's over.
Next morning night, but, okay.
Bring it with you.
Four thirty P.M.
The fourteenth, then.
And how long are we looking at being here, so I can put an end to my, a few hours?
Uh, city council, I, I plan for at least two, two hours.
All right, so I'm not sure if I can be here at four thirty that day.
Okay.
So, should we do five to seven?
Uh, well, the later the better for, what would work for you guys, 'cause yeah, I'll be, I believe in Boston that morning.
It would make it better for me.
Driving through, but, you know...
Yeah, I'm in, uh, well, I can be here almost at four thirty, and then the weather is a bit afternoon, so five o'clock, why would we wait at five? Five o'clock, maybe, okay.
John, you're not saying anything, does that work for you?
I don't know.
Oh, okay. Then you go in.
I go in at four.
Oh, me, of course. Okay.
Even if we go back to our ten-hour schedule, I'd still get out at two.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Okay, can you have a motion for that?
I suppose. I'll make the motion. Oh, I just lost it. To set a budget work session for Thursday, April fourteenth, beginning at five P.M.
A second.
Can we have a roll call, Carrie?
Councilmember Wolfile?
Yes.
Minehart?
Yes.
Sippers?
Yes.
Swolman?
Yes.
Mayor Filkins?
Yes. Motion carries.
I have a question about that. Is there anything we should do to prepare for that?
We will be getting some information, uh, to you in advance. April one, you'll have some draft documentation, and we'll also get, uh, jennied out and so forth in advance of the meeting.
I guess to put some thought into that before we go, and just have everything said to us, like, this might be what we all look at here.
Perhaps. I like that. Perhaps, Owen, if this year you could provide us some of those hot topic areas to kind of, um, think about, um, where we might focus.
Sure. Yeah, and...
You know, based on your past experiences with your councils, what kind of questions, where should we focus our studies?
Okay. Yeah, we can do that, and, uh, also, you know, with the workstation session meeting a little bit later, you'll have the budget for, you know, like, thirteen days or something in your hands, so, you know, if you want to schedule a time to either come in or, or give me a phone call, or let me know when a time would work, and I could come meet you somewhere, and, uh, you know, we can begin some discussions, or you should, could bounce some questions off me even before we get there to help drive some of that, too. But I'll, I'll certainly prepare something, and then Marcus and I will get together and talk about, you know, what we think maybe the highlights would be. That'd be no problem.
Now, if, uh, it is the day before taxes are due, and it's not usually that late, but I haven't started yet.
Well, good. No, that evening is not available to you.
Unless we do the day seven. That's my priority at that point. I'll get it done beforehand.
Okay. Who's in charge of the heat in this room?
I've been communicating about that, so...
Me too.
I just think we didn't cool it down soon enough, and then the volume of people, and there's just not any airflow in here, so...
Those are really, yeah.
And is it possible, like, when we find ourselves in a situation to put these doors all open?
Yeah, probably. Yeah.
'Cause it would look heat up here, it's, holy, and then everybody's warm, but...
Yeah.
We're sweating like criminals.
We'll do better. Do better. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
My strategy for a short meeting.
That's, it didn't work. It didn't work. Okay. Next.
Uh, next, uh, next is a, uh, request to set a public hearing regarding an industrial facilities tax abatement request that came in from Wyoming Warehouse, uh, facility that are nationally with Wyoming Warehouse, located off of River Street, uh, back behind the, uh, five-dollar car wash, uh, facility that is there.
Is that River Street? You keep telling River Street. It's not River Street. It's like Air Street.
Air Street, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Where's the five-dollar car wash?
Right by the credit union.
Right next to credit union.
Oh, got it.
It's the big building.
Oh, right.
Yeah, the big balloon building.
Charity-based, special windows.
Delta Trustee?
Yeah.
Yep. Former, former Delta Trustee, and Delta Trustee before my...
Yeah, that's, that's...
Thank you for the clarification and secret. Yeah, I think that's the second and third time already.
Yeah, you said that, remember that five-dollar car wash, or that's just how much you know you have to pay to go there?
There is signs, there's five-dollar wash on it. Maybe there's another name on it.
That's the cheapest one. Okay. But we digress. Okay, so...
Um, so the IFT, uh, will create, uh, four positions, uh, and it's listed as a total amount of nine fifty-nine, nine hundred. And that is between real property and personal property. Owen, is there anything you wanted to clarify in that?
Yeah, that's, um, the personal property tax reform eliminated taxes on eligible manufacturing personal property. This is not, this is commercial property, but it is in the IFT district, so there was some discussion on if they were even eligible, and, and our assessor confirmed with the State Tax Commission, they told him that this, even though it's personal property or commercial, it is in the industrial district, and therefore it would be eligible. So there was a little bit of confusion.
Can you say that again?
Sure.
I'm really sorry, but I thought the same thing. I was like...
Personal property tax reform, it eliminated the tax, um, phase in basis, obviously, on eligible manufacturing personal property. So it had to, you had to basically state that it, uh, was used in a, an industrial process. Then it would be exempt from, uh, ad valorem taxes. And then, at that point, the IFT would be irrelevant. This is not eligible manufacturing personal property. This is commercial personal property, which is still taxed, as long as it's over eighty thousand dollars in value, it's taxed just like it always was taxed. So because of that, this property would be taxable on a normal basis, just like it used to be, because it's commercial and because it's over eighty thousand dollars.
So...
So the, the IFT is, is still relevant, because it doesn't qualify for the exemption.
So that's it.
They're not a manufacturer, and because...
They're a warehouse.
As the warehouse is...
Only manufacturers that get the tax break. Okay. Okay. I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution and set a public hearing for April 4th, 2016, to consider a request from Wyoming Warehouse LLC for an industrial facilities tax exemption certificate in the amount of $959,000. And $959,900.
Okay.
Councilmember Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Sloman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion, Carrie.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. The next two items are somewhat related. The city is in the process of applying for a grant and under, or actually for two grants, and under the grant application requirements, we do need a resolution from the local governing board, that would be you guys, the City Council. The first request is with respect to the White Pine Trail Extension and Trailhead project. This is a project that I think most of you are familiar with. This is not actually specifying the project itself. We're not submitting a project plan for, say, to them with final details, but we need to try to see if we can get some outside funding to help kickstart this project. As you can see in the resolution, we're using some estimated numbers that we have for a total project cost of a little over $356,000. There is a local match provision. We are looking at requesting $265,000 with the local match being $91,773 accordingly. Do you have any questions I could perhaps try to address, or Mike, I can? Feel free to ask, but we cannot even apply for the grant without this resolution to be a part of the pack-up.
And where's the $91,773 coming from?
To be determined.
So, if we go out there and we apply for this and over we get it...
We'll have to find the money. Is he soaking it?
I don't see any, I think that is...
$300,000, that's all I can tell you.
Yeah, it's much better than coming up with $350,000.
We've typically been able to, with council's partnership, find some funds to invest in...
Is this called hard cash, or is some of this in-kind?
I think that would be, it'd probably be mostly cash, but I think partially it could be some in-kind as well, but there wouldn't be a lot of that, I wouldn't think.
Okay, so, we can go ahead and apply. We don't have to accept it.
I will state in all seriousness, though, if we are very fortunate enough to get the funds, it would not be in our best interest to turn it down after going through that process. We did have, an aside I did with my members of my staff, with similar concerns about trying to find the funding, should we be fortunate enough that the state grants us the award. And, you know, in all honesty, we will do everything we can to creatively piece together where we pull the money from. This is a major project that will help continue to grow the downtown core area that we're really focusing on right now. We are very confident that this is something that the City Council and other agencies within our area are very supportive of. This was done through a real wide breadth of support, community and agency support. And it's a project that is sort of next on the list of projects.
So, is that support still out there, community, agency, the people who really want this to happen within the community? Are they still out there, and would they be a driver along with us to try and come up with these funds?
Well, we're actually applying to one of the agencies.
Okay, we won't ask them then, but the rest of the people?
So, it's hard to say. We have not had conversation with the DEQ or with some of the other boards that were part of the discussion process in a while. This was something that was planned over a year ago, and until we realize that the grant cycle is coming due, it's due in April for next year's projects, and so there's a very quick turnaround.
Well, perhaps there's an opportunity for you and Owen to have those conversations, or somebody to have those conversations with some of those people that are involved, letting them know this is a possibility, and kind of...
We would want them to, yes. In fact, we would probably want letters of support from them to go along with the application.
And to check.
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution of support for the White Pine Trail Extension and Trailhead.
Second.
I'm not asking those questions because I'm against it. I'm really excited about it, but, yeah. Okay. Carrie, could we have a little call, please?
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Sloman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion, Carrie.
The next grant application that we had before us is a 50-50 grant match. This is not quite as good as the other grant match that we just talked about, but this one is for the Kenwood Beach Boat Launch Pavilion Playground Restroom. It is in dire need of being completely redone, using rather recent estimates from what it cost us to put the bathroom facility by the Lower Performance Arts Pavilion. That's the number that we dropped in here, that being $160,000, which would be an $80,000 grant request followed by an $80,000 match. It's the same, you know, spirit is the same where it requires just to apply the support resolution from the City Council.
I'm gonna go ahead and make that motion, so I know that's something that really needs to be taken care of, so I will make a motion to adopt the resolution of support for Kenwood Beach Boat Launch Pavilion and Playground Restroom. Second.
Councilmember Sloman?
Yes.
Wolfile?
Yes.
Meinhart?
Yes.
Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Philkins?
Yes. Motion, Carrie. Okay, we had a lot of minutes, bills and commissions, and we're not gonna read them aloud, it's been a long evening, but we can read to those as we find the time. At this time, we'll open the floor for public comments. Again, if you come forward, we do ask that you keep them to three minutes, and let us know your name, and also write down your name and your address for us. Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll go ahead and close public comment. Does anybody have anything for good of the order this evening?
I do.
Okay.
Let's see if I can find it. I've got a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you to Linda Anderson for coming up with that great idea of how to help manage some of those flower beds along the walkway. You know, it's citizenship like that, or citizenry like that, that makes us who we are, and it makes for a great community. She had the idea, she was like, "Oh, I'm gonna do something with that." And can't wait to see some of the beautiful results of that project. Like other councilmembers, I'm sure, I'm looking forward to attending the Michigan Municipal League Legislative Conference tomorrow afternoon and on Wednesday down in Lansing. I'm also planning on attending the, it's got a long name, Michigan's Municipal Water Infrastructure Policy Choices and Issues Conference, being held by Michigan State University and several other universities that have done some research to bring forward issues that policymakers really should know about to make sure that they're asking the right questions, and to help ensure our municipality has safe water. It's all really, you know, in response to what happened in front. And I have no reason to believe that we don't, but as a decision maker, I feel like, you know, I really rely on others to give me the information, and that may have been part of the problem that happened in front, because everybody else was taking care of it. And so, I just need, I want to be more educated in that area, so I'm planning on attending that tomorrow. The other thing that I wanted to talk about a little bit, and I'll try to be brief, but last week was Sunshine Week, and the Cadillac News had a nice editorial in Saturday's paper, I believe, my, yeah, Saturday's paper, about the Open Meetings Act. And I know this is coming from a press perspective, and they're gonna look at it differently than another association. But this gentleman, Brian Hunhoff, contributing editor for Yankton County, South Dakota Observer, came up with the Ten Commandments for Open Meetings. One, do not gather as a... And I'm gonna read these quickly, and some of them, we have absolutely, in my opinion, we have absolutely no problems with. Others, I think there is some food for thought here. One, do not gather as a quorum outside of regular meetings, and do not hold special meetings without giving at least 24 hours' public notice. Two, do not habitually add last-minute items to the agenda, and do not act on anything not listed on the posted agenda. Three, do not abuse the litigation excuse for executive or closed sessions to speculate about possible or imagined lawsuits. Four, do not stretch the personnel excuse for executive sessions to discuss policy issues. Five, do not dial up the negotiation excuse to suddenly exclude the public from discussion of controversial issues that were previously aired through thoroughly in open session. Six, do not allow executive session conversations to stray to other topics. Seven, do not violate the spirit of the open meeting law with frequent phone, email, or text dialogues with each other. Reach consensus at the meeting. Eight, do not make a habit of whispering or passing notes at meetings. You were elected to speak for us. Tell what you have to say out loud and proud. Nine, allow public input at every meeting included on every agenda. And 10, be as transparent as possible. Do not hold executive sessions simply because council advised that it is legal to do so. Ask yourself, is it absolutely critical that we discuss this privately? That should be the standard, because legality and necessity are two different things. Good thoughts. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Just wanted to mention, there's a new website that's out there. It's called savemycity.org. It's got some good data about the state of finances in the state of Michigan. You can focus it in on the county, and then specifically on the city, and you can do that statewide. You can pick any county you want, any city, any township, any organization that has received revenue-sharing funds. You can go in and see where it's at. For Cadillac, as a for instance, basically since Pope went into place, I think we're off by over $4 million of funds that otherwise would have or should have been contributed and shared to the city have not been. They've been withheld by the state of Michigan, not adhering to their pledge or to their promise. So, anyhow, it's good information. There's gonna be a lot of information about this site and about the overhaul of finances, financing, a finance overhaul that the Michigan Municipal League is gonna start a lobbying campaign for, that we'll hear about at the Capitol Convention this weekend. So, they just made the save public today, and I just wanted to get it out there. It's www.savemycity.org.
That'll be really interesting to hear. Yes. So, well, I would like to say, welcome to, we're excited to have you, and I think everybody sitting here is really committed to, you know, helping you get your feet wet and be comfortable in your seat, and we've got a lot of exciting things going on, and I'm glad to be on this stream with all of you.
I'm hoping I can say that the city is Cadillac, though.
I know you are.
I did have a question, though.
Okay.
Like, if you wanted to make the resolution to have something put on the agenda next, would you, can you do that now, or when would you do that?
Just talk to Marcus.
Okay. Because I would like to make a motion to put on the, is it April 4th? Yeah, April 4th. April 4th agenda that we do revisit the issue of CCTV to get more public input on it, and get it to have more time for the public, because that's, even before I was elected, I would've come to that one if I knew it was on there. But I read the agenda, and I said that the only thing that was gonna be on it was about the building.
Mm-hmm.
And so, I couldn't get away from what I was doing to come in for that. So, I'd like to do that if I could.
So, if at this point a motion is made, it would need support from council to board. Just as reference, we do have the agreement that was executed by City Council at your last meeting regarding the transition of CCTV to the intergovernmental agreement with the ISD.
Sorry, do you put...
Sorry.
And whereas it was, you know, in these Ten Commandments of meetings, adding something to a meeting, I know we addressed that at that time as well, but, you know, the accusations that were denying students access to it, I have to say that since we've been at, we haven't been at CAPS for how many years? And I don't think students have been involved for many years, and I know that what our goal was is to put it back in the hands of students. This was not a handover to, this was not privatizing on our part in any way, shape or form. It was putting it in the hands of students and an educational facility, and that's why I voted for it, even though the concern about adding something like that that would need, you know, that would call for more input was in order. But that's the reason that I did vote for it, is in order to include more students. So, I just wanted to make sure that that was out there, that this was not us voting to privatize CCTV in any way, shape or form. This was, and the Rexford, Missalki ISD Career Tech Center, we thought it was sharing the wealth because it actually reaches to these other communities. And, you know, we talked about getting along with our neighbors and trying to expand out of our close, you know, just benefiting the city, I think, that benefiting students in any way, shape or form is a good thing. It's up to the ISD for who then facilitates it, in terms of running equipment and that sort of thing, but it will still be students in classes who will be participating in that, which was my goal from the very beginning of when it was removed from that.
I'm gonna tend to agree with everything that Kier just said, and, you know, when I looked at the opportunity that we had, you know, collaboration is really important. And I think that, you know, we had our youth council sitting here this evening, and I'm so incredibly proud of them, and the opportunity to interact with them. And, you know, from our perspective, you know, we had the opportunity to give this back to the students through the ISD. I had somebody ask me today, "Why can't the county go through the ISD to get our meetings aired?" And I said, "Well, there's probably no reason that you can't. You'll have to contact the ISD, because that's who we're contracting with." But somebody out in the public thought that that would be a great idea, that then we can show the public what's going on at the county level, and not just reading it in the paper, but they're able to air that as well. So...
Well, I feel comfortable with the action we took that night. I felt involving the ISD was a win-win for us and for them, and for the students. I would not have voted for it either if I thought that we were privatizing it, which I don't believe we have. And I felt that was gonna move CCTV ahead into the future, because we did have issues with older equipment, and if we were going to maintain it ourselves, coming up with the funding to do that, if we were gonna run it ourselves, hiring employees to do that, and I think that using the funds that we had to allow them to take it over was, I felt, still do a good choice.
Okay.
So, about a second.
I appreciate your courage in wanting to do it. Okay, well, if nothing else, we will go ahead and adjourn.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.